I tell you what, we're all glad to be here and, you know, kind of glad. I don't think the storms were as bad as predicted and, you know, I think we came through okidoki. Tell you what, let's just wait a minute for the city manager and then we'll get rolling.
He has a beautiful blue suit on.
It's the safest room in the city.
Guys, we've never got a foot seat.
Four shoes.
Okay, today our first briefing is going to be on the independent citizen review board update and that is requested by, you know, council member Wooton and we have Regina and Gina Hiller and Rod Ingram are going to, you know, give us a status report of the, thank you folks.
Thank you. The city code provides that the independent citizen review board, which would provide oversight over the police department, that the board shall be composed of 11 voting members and two non-voting members. The requirements for the members are that they be eligible to vote, that they reside in the city of Virginia Beach, and that they reflect the demographic diversity of the city. On subsequent slides, we'll talk about disqualifiers, but first, let's talk about reflecting the demographic diversity of the city. State law requires that the board reflect the demographic diversity of the city, but state law does not define that term. The task force that you appointed considered various aspects of demographic diversity and based on that, they made recommendations which are now part of the city code. And those recommendations say that appointees should reflect the racial, gender, gender identity, and socio-economic diversity of the city's population.
So, to help us make sure that we're meeting the diversity requirements that state code and city code have already set up, we're using the US Census data. And that data will give us information that we will then use to provide recommendations or the panel will use to provide recommendations to the city council. So, for example, on the race and ethnicity, using an 11-member panel, we will be using the census data and will be trying to recommend six individuals that will be white, we'll have two that are African-American and so forth. We want our panel to be representative of the community that they will be serving. So that's what the diversity element is there for. We will also have census data on sex. Now, the census data tells us male and female. If the applicants want to go further and get more information on gender identity, that will be welcomed as well because, again, we're after having a panel, a board, that is going to be representative of our community. So we want that diversity information. We will have information on income, that is something else that can be used. We have the tiers here for our use. And then, this is going to be one that is going to be interesting. We're asking for, city council is asking for two individuals, at least two individuals, that will be under the age of 40. Now, if you look at the statistics on the chart, you'll see, you'll tell them, well, that should be easy to get. We have, you know, ample number to select from. But think about 40-year-olds, that age group. A lot of time spent with work, a lot of time spent with family. So, we may not have the applicants that we want to have so that we can have a good selection of those individuals under 40. But we're striving to have that. We want to have those two individuals that are under 40. So we are working towards that as we speak. All right? And then there are some state law disqualifiers that Rod has been having some fun with.
Okay, thank you.
The state law provides that any person who currently serves as a law enforcement officer as defined by state law is ineligible to serve on the Oversight Board. The state law defines law enforcement officer as any employee of a police department or sheriff's office, which is a part of the state or a political subdivision, a town, city, or county, or any private police department and who is responsible for the prevention and detection of crime and the enforcement of penal traffic and highway laws. And also, that it shall include a laundry list of state-level agents such as ABC special agents and lottery investigators and DMV enforcement officers and the other state officers that you see listed there. So it's a very broad definition with respect to law enforcement officers who work for the state or who work for a locality in Virginia. The disqualifier does allow a retired law enforcement officer to serve, but only as an advisory, a state official, non-voting member. And it requires that such law enforcement officer shall not have previously been employed as a law enforcement officer by the city, but shall have been employed as a law enforcement officer in a locality similar to the city. The city code also has disqualifiers. I've divided these into sections, criminal and non-criminal. The criminal ones are that you may not serve on the board if any of the following apply: if you are a convicted felon unless your rights have been restored and the felony conviction did not involve moral turpitude, which is lying, cheating, or stealing; a sex offense, domestic assault, offenses involving children as victims, and gun violations, or any crime of violence. Also ineligible to serve would be a person convicted of any misdemeanor involving moral turpitude, sex offenses, domestic assault, or offenses involving children as victims or gun violations; if the person is currently or previously subject to a protective order; if they have had multiple DUI convictions within 10 years; or if they have any pending criminal charges or adjudication. You'll recall that the types of records that members of this panel will have access to include criminal investigative files and personnel information, highly confidential information, information about victims. So it's understandable why the task force recommended these disqualifiers. The non-criminal disqualifiers are: cannot be a public office holder or a candidate for public office; cannot be employed by or an immediate family member of someone who is employed by the city; but could be a voting member if they honorably separated from city service for at least five years; no current employee of any law enforcement agency; no one with a less than honorable discharge from the military; no one with outstanding judgments or pending litigation against the city by the appointee or by one of their immediate family members; or pending litigation against a law enforcement officer by an appointee or one of their immediate family members.
So once we have gotten through the diversity elements and the disqualifiers, the panel will be ready to recommend appointments to the board. Now, of course, as a new board, so all of the members are going to be starting at the same time, but we don't want them to all end at the same time and then we'll start with another new board. So, the appointments are planned to be staggered appointments. So we will have four for three years, four for two years, and so forth. And that goes for the voting members as well as the non-voting members. After those initial appointments, all of the appointments will then be for three years. So right now, the panel is in the process of interviewing candidates. They've already started interviews. They have more interviews to conduct. In the process of conducting the interviews, paperwork is given to the candidate so that they can go to the police department to go ahead and have their fingerprint check and their criminal background check completed. And they are, once all of that is done and they are ready to make recommendations to the city council, once those appointments have been made by council, we will start the training. The training has already been created by our police department. It is a very comprehensive training and it should be about 45, 48 hours. It's about 35 hours or so that is in classroom, so to speak, and then there's another 10 hours that is associated with ride-alongs with our officers. So we want them to have a good feel for what they will be looking at when time comes to review those cases. So that training is already planned and underway. But I do want to make sure that is understood, that we are still accepting applications for this board. So we want individuals to continue to submit the applications so that the panel can have the opportunity to review those, have more interviews, and get the best panel that we can for this board. Now, if this presentation is posted, that's the link that will lead you to the Talent Bank application. Any of our citizens who want to actually apply can just follow that link. Otherwise, go to VB.gov and just search for ICRB and it will take you directly to that Talent Bank application. All right? So are there any questions?
Hey, any questions? Yeah, don't say no.
Are you going to wait to appoint all 11, have all 11, or kind of go as you, kind of, as you come? You're going to try to seat all 11 at one time, or if you only get 10, can you keep it moving?
It's council's prerogative, but I would think that with 10, you could keep moving. 11 was selected, so we'd have an odd number in case it's a close vote. But you could go for it with only 10.
And we also want to, since the training is so, the practice, I mean, that's a long training, we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to go through the training together if possible. So it'd be great to do that.
Hey, anyone else at this point? Sabrina.
Thank you. And I certainly do appreciate the update that's been provided. I do apologize a bit to the public, though, because I certainly want to make sure the public is updated on a continuous basis and I don't believe they've had an update since we accepted and approved the task force recommendations. But I got to tell you, I'm a bit concerned. I am, because I don't want this ICRB ending up becoming the council member Rosemary Wilson ICRB. And I say that because since the very beginning, I see an interview committee that's formed, and I'll say, I don't want it to be any specific council member's body, because it should be a collective group working towards doing this. But when I see an interview committee that was predominantly led by one particular council member, and we're being told who's on that committee, and then selecting former Chief Jacobs, Jake Jacobs, who the minority committee, where the minority residents don't really have a favorable out view, an outlook of him, not saying that he's a bad person, but that would not be their first choice of someone as a chair of an interview committee who's selecting some of the folks to be considered for this board. And so, you know, I also become concerned when I hear from some folks who say they were told by the council member to apply. That concerns me, because now I'm thinking, are we truly being independent here or are we not? You know, it's a process. And when there's a truly independent process, you go through that process. You don't come to folks and say, well, you have a list of folks you want to be on that board. That's not the way you conduct business. And some people might say, well, you know, I've recommended folks to be on a board or committee. What's wrong with that? No, for an independent citizens review board, you can't do that. You can't pick who you want, who you think is good, and tell them to go try out for it. It has to truly be independent, you know? That's why we're asking for more applications. And I am accountable to the people, because when it's all said and done, when the people and the residents see what we come up with, we all have to be accountable for what they see. And this has to be a board that's truly independent, that's going to work on the behalf of the people and investigate some serious cases. And so, like I said, I'm concerned about it. I'm going through this process and, you know, this is quite a few things I'm seeing that make me a bit concerned, you know, going forward, knowing this process is really supposed to be truly independent, transparent. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else, Barbara?
Well, I guess as the other councilperson appointed to this committee, I need to make some comments. I'm, I have an entirely different view, I'm afraid. It's better if we always agree, but it's also okay if we disagree from now and then so we can get things right. But I really feel very encouraged by this process. This interview committee was approved by the council with two council members and two members of the original, of the task force. And, of course, there was a long delay in developing a new Talent Bank application, which allowed the applicants to apply, knowing what these disqualifiers were and so forth, because it is a different application than what we have otherwise, because we're asking some information that we don't normally ask. And so we did have a delay in developing the Talent Bank application. And then the Talent Bank applications have been out there for a while until we have gotten a really good list, group of people who have applied. The committee of four has had three meetings, I think. And we have, are looking at all of the applications we have at this point. As Ms. Hilliard said, there are still applications being accepted. And in looking at the demographics of the city and what we are expected to have on this committee, it is a different process from what we usually do, because like I say, we usually don't ask for this information from people that we appoint, but these requirements to have the demographics reflected and to have, look at all of these disqualifiers makes us have to do a much more in-depth look at all of the applicants. But please be assured, we're looking at every single application and are beginning the interviews. How many we interview, but we, I'm not exactly sure to tell you how, at what point we'll send the list to you folks. But this body is going to be the body that determines who is appointed. This committee is simply reviewing these applications, interviewing, giving you our best comments, because I don't think this body wants to go through all of this looking to make sure all of these disqualifiers are met and so forth. That's just what this committee is doing, trying to come up with where we would stand in meeting all of these requirements that are set for this committee. But please be assured, this body is going to be the body that determines who is on that committee. This interview committee is simply doing some preliminary work to look at the applicants for you and make those recommendations. And I hope that we can have that to you shortly so that you can make that decision. But one of the things I'm looking for, when I'm looking at these applications, is to make certain that the people that we're recommending to you are independent and meet these requirements. And I think the training is going to be so critical for the success of this committee, because they have to know an awful lot and to understand that. And we're certainly not getting into any part of that. That's going to come after you have selected the 11 people you want to appoint. And it's very likely that some of these people may get part of the way through that training and decide, hmm, I don't think I want to go any further. And so that's why we need to continue to get other applicants, because some of these people may decide along the way that they simply drop out. So it will be a process, an ongoing process. And maybe it's just because I tend to be an optimist, but I think it looks like it's coming together very well, and I think we're going to have some good recommendations for you.
And the chairman was chosen by your body, correct?
Right. The committee chose the chairman.
Right.
Okay, Sabrina.
Let me just say, though the chairman was chosen by the body, before that, I had to ask the attorney to let him know that he wasn't already selected, because he was told, he said by you, Vice Chair, that he was going to be the chair. So he had to correct that, because no one at this body can appoint a chair to any board. No council member should be appointing that. So he had to change that. And yes, he was accepted. I didn't vote for him, because I didn't feel that was necessary, but let's be honest, because that's what I'm here to do, to be, you know, I, not that I'm not an optimist, I just call it like I see it. That's what I saw, you know? And most folks may not, may not understand it, but I saw, I know what I saw. I read the email, I saw what happened. And in terms of the committee being selected, we were just told who was going to be on the board. We didn't have a say-so of who was going to be selected, we were just told, you know? And so, here we are, but that's not a transparent process when it comes to selecting, you know, this overall body. And I will continue to keep you updated on things that I see and call it out as it is. Otherwise, we continue to do things this way. It's not transparent, it's not what the people asked for, and I work for the people and I'm going to tell the truth about.
Okay, Aaron, and then Rosemary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add to the conversation that I'm really proud of Councilmember Wooton's work with getting the CRB to where it is now. You know, she fought extremely hard to get this board and this committee enacted. It was a very close vote. In the late Louis Jones, Councilmember Louis Jones was a tie-breaking vote that they gave to approve, I believe it was a 6-5 vote. And so, with that being said, you know, I always felt, so when a council member had initiative that they fight very hard for, then they should be, they should lead on that initiative. But it seems as though Councilmember Wooton has been on the back end of making decisions when it comes to this, this board. I say that because when we first heard about the committee or the council board that it's going to be two members appointed to this board to pick who's going to go on the IRP or Decision Review Board, Councilmember Wooton had to basically speak up and had to fight to be that third person on this board, which I was proud to support her in that effort. But that being said, I think a lot of what she has to say has legitimacy. And so I think we should listen and we should take her lead on this thing. Not saying that, you know, everyone has an opportunity to make recommendations to the board, but it's something she fought for. She's very passionate about it and I think we should follow her. Thank you. Thank you.
I think there's some misunderstanding when I talked to Chief Jacobs. In fact, I told him, I can't appoint you, it has to be either the council do it or the committee itself. That's why I asked. The committee itself made him chair. And so that was a misunderstanding. I don't think there's anything in writing or anything that will show that I said, you will be chair. So I'm sorry about the misunderstanding that occurred. And once he realized, you know, but he did have a lot. He actually wrote the plan and he knows it very, very well. And I think he is a very able leader and I'm sure he's doing a good job. And I think it's up to all of us, if we see people in the community, because we're having a hard time filling all those slots, if we see anybody, we can encourage them to send in their Talent Bank form. But I haven't had anything to do with the interview teams or anything. I really think there's...
Right. And I think it's clear, I think some people are referring to that as a board, but it's just a committee. You had a similar interview group to determine who we were going to select for the bottom referendum review committee. It's exactly in that same fashion. They interviewed applicants and made recommendations to the council for that committee. And this is just the interview committee, it is not a board.
I was just approving. Amy. Well, I'll just say this, you know, it is in writing. Whether he must understood what you said, there was clearly a conversation. And so when I saw the email, I reached out to staff and I said, how can this happen? And he certainly looked at Robertson rules. Robertson rules says that you can't do that. And so he reached out to let you know and Chief Jacobs as well about not being able to be in that position or you being able to put him in that position. So it is in writing, because when I saw it, I addressed it with staff and said, this doesn't seem quite right. And so, after that point, he mentioned he addressed it with you and so then we moved forward. But it didn't look right. Turns out, it wasn't right. And then we went forward. But, again, you got to follow the policies and you got to follow the rules here, you know? And if you see something that's not right, you should say something. And I think that's important. And I think in terms of who you, I don't, I haven't asked anybody to be a part of the board, because I want it to be truly independent. I want it to come from people who are really interested in seeing the city address these issues, because it is one of the most profound pieces of legislation that we've done as a body to make sure we have an independent citizens review board. And so, I'm not going to go and ask and recruit folks. I want people to come to the table who want to do it, who have a passion, who understand it. But when I'm sitting at a table and someone says, well, Councilmember Rosemary told me I would be a good fit and to apply, that gives me pause for reserve. And it doesn't sound right, it's not right. And that's not how you operate in making sure that you have a clearly independent ICRB. I don't care what you say, how to, how you can try to roll over it, try to make it sound... No, that's not right. You have to do it the right way. Otherwise, the people who we're working for, when they see what we come up with, they're not going to have, there's not going to be any credibility in it and they're not going to trust us. And that's what is, building an independent CRB is about building trust with the community. Don't undermine that in the process. That's it. It's trust. Build the trust with the community. You do that by being transparent, you do that by operating through the process, you do that by making sure it's transparent, keeping the people updated. That builds trust. But when you undermine the process, you're doing the people a disservice. And that's not what I'm here to do.
Hey, anybody else at this point? Before we move on, let's just say this, I think it's an important thing that, you know, we do take this very seriously. You know, I think we have been, we've been deliberate. It's taken a while to get to this point. This is a, you know, has some, you know, a special conditions that go with it in terms of, you know, requirements and what's going to be needed, time commitments or anything. But the thing is, I would think, one thing we could all agree on, that we are the ultimate decision-makers who will get appointed to this board. And, you know, let's just be, you know, positive and say, we're going to, you know, get the right people on. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. DeHany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Police Chief Lutegue will provide to the council an update on various initiatives, including technology and staffing and recruitment for the police department, as well as a preliminary crime stats update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and update you in regards to talk about technology today. We're going to talk about recruiting and give a brief crime update. What I would like to do is, before we get started, is I have a number of staff here with me today, so I'd like to introduce them. First and foremost, we've got Captain Zelms right behind you. Captain Zelms is currently in charge of our Training Bureau, but for the last 18 months, he has really done a fantastic job. But for the last 18 months, he has really done a fantastic job. He was our Technology Bureau Commander. And I think what we're going to present today, you're going to be very impressed. So I owe Captain Zelms and Aftonoglesby a, a debt of gratitude for their great work. Uh, next to him is Deputy Chief Wychendall, who is now in charge of our Investigations. So Detective Bureau, Special Investigations. Uh, running the, uh, computer is my executive aide Lieutenant Westler. Behind him is our new recruiting manager, Lieutenant James Gordon. We've got, uh, let's see, Deputy Chief Adams in the back. Got Melissa from PAO and Lieutenant Sanyer. And have I missed, oh, I did miss one. So it gives me great pleasure today to introduce our new Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Jody Saunders. So Ms. Saunders will lead our Public Affairs Unit focusing on strategic communications, both internal and external, community engagement, and of course, media relations. So she has recently located to us from Charlottesville. She brings with her over 20 years of experience in public relations, strategic communications, media relations, and graphic design. Uh, most recently, she was the Director of Public Relations for JONT, a public transit organization serving seven municipalities in central Virginia. She spent several years in the Albemarle County Communications Office, where she was responsible for leading and developing effective communication and community relations activities. Uh, so she has had plenty of crisis communications exposure in both positions. She has a BA in graphic design from James Madison and a master's in communications from the Virginia Commonwealth University. So we take opportunity and please welcome Jody to the city. So first, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Zelms to, to talk about recruiting. Um, I'm sorry, technology. One of the things when we talk about recruiting and I talk to our lateral hires, they come to us and they give us great feedback. Chief, it's a great department. It is a great city. We like the people we work with. We're supported by this community. We're supported by this council. But what about the technology? Our technology, where I came from, is better than what we had. So what I, hopefully you're going to see is over the last two years, we have done Captain Zelms and a number of people have done a very, very good job of trying to drag us out of the technology stoner just yet. Captain Zelms, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, everybody. What I'm about to talk to you about represents the last 18 months of hard work that not only makes your officers better equipped and more efficient, uh, but also makes your city a safer place to live, work, and play. So first, I'd like to thank each of you because without the support, we wouldn't have been able to, you know, go, go along with these endeavors. And also the partnership with the People Wallace and Information Technology was greatly appreciated. Uh, it was a lot of effort on their part as well. So the first, the first slide that I'll get into is ShotSpotter. I think that everybody's heard of it. It was a, uh, long overdue effort in which we recognize the need to address gun crime violence throughout our city. It was a phased-in deployment through July of, uh, July and September of 2021. We started with four square miles of coverage, uh, two square miles in the oceanfront and two square miles in the western bayside area. It's important to recognize that those areas were identified not because we thought that they were important, but because that's where the gun crime data showed we needed to be. With that gun crime data, we're also planning an expansion in the first and fourth precincts in the coming months. Some of the successes of ShotSpotter. In the second precinct coverage area alone, since July 14th, 2021, we've had 120 activations, capturing 353 rounds of gunfire. We've recovered 120 shell casings and we received corresponding 911 calls only 18% of the time. I'll, I'll go back to that number in a second. For the third precinct coverage area, we started September 20, 29th, 2021. We've had 283 activations, representing 887 rounds of gunfire. We've recovered 382 shell casings and we've only received a corresponding 911 call 26% of the time. Those numbers are important because I'd actually like to point out that compared to the national average, that's very good. Nationally, we're in the low teens of corresponding 911 calls. That means the vast majority of the time when there's gunfire in a community, people don't call the police. And when I talk to communities, community groups and, uh, different bodies, I'd like to say that we want to respond, but we need to know, we need to know when there's trouble in an area. We need to know when gunfire is present so that we can respond and we can take action. So with the implementation of ShotSpotter, an important thing is we respond to gunfire in these areas every time. Our officers are there, uh, within minutes of gunfire. So within 45 seconds typically, uh, an alert is sent to our officers on their mobile devices and we go to the dot. So it tells us exactly where we need to be in the area to search. Now, we might not always find a person, but at least the community knows that we care, that we're responding, that we're trying to, to try to intervene in gun violence. Uh, some important numbers, since the go-live date, in total, we've made 21 arrests off of those alerts and we've also recovered 24 guns. So there's real value in this system. The great part about technology is, in, in the different pieces that I'm going to discuss, is how they work together. So responding to gunfire is one part of a overall gun crime reduction strategy. But when you combine it with other efforts that we're doing, such as the NIBIN-Brashtrax system that we've, we've, uh, implemented, it really puts us in a comprehensive, uh, strategy for attack on gun crime violence. So NIBIN is the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. And Brashtrax is the machine that helps compare and contrast the shell casings that we recover. So we, we talked about the hundreds of shell casings that we recover based on ShotSpotter alerts or other crimes within the city. We now have the ability to enter these into our own system and it's taking six to nine months for the Department of Forensic Science to analyze that and give us results. We are now able to get those results within 72 hours. That's a dramatic improvement. It vastly increases the likelihood of us intervening and apprehending the suspect. Since its go-live December 1st, 2021, we've entered 601, excuse me, we've, we've collected 601 cartridge casings from crime scene. We've had 772 cartridge casing from seized firearms and that's generated 282 leads. This is just, this wasn't possible before. Without your support, this wasn't possible. We are vastly more prepared to address gun crime today than we were and we're able to do it more effectively and efficiently. Axon, specifically body cameras. So as you know, all sworn personnel are issued a body camera. At first, the plan was for all patrol to be issued a body camera. Shortly after the chief's arrival and leadership discussion, uh, we felt, we, we understood the value of every officer in uniform having a body camera. So we, we pivoted and we were able to outfit every single officer with a body camera. We changed the pre-event buffer, which is the time prior to the camera's activation being recording, from 30 seconds to two minutes, the max that it could be. So at the time I pressed the button, the video is automatically capturing two minutes prior worth of video. So it shows us the, the interactions and the, and the capabilities that led up to the encounter. That's a valuable thing. We also implemented a policy change. Previously, the officers were told to activate their body cameras when they arrived on scene. Instead, now our officers activate their body cameras the moment they receive a call for service. And as it was explained, even if they are getting two minutes worth of steering wheel footage, I'd rather see these two minutes of steering wheel footage and not have to have them worry about pressing their budding, their button when they arrive on scene than the reverse. These cameras are capable of live streaming. It gives GPS locations, which has already proven valuable in helping officers navigate through some densely wooded areas. It's, it's capable of signal activation, meaning it doesn't need human intervention to turn on. So whether we draw our weapons from our holster, a police car turns on its lights, we activate our taser, it, it activates our camera and any camera within a 60 to 90 foot radius, the moment one of those triggers, uh, are, are initiated. Some important metrics to consider. In 2022 year-to-date, we've already captured over 416,000 videos. In terms of gigabytes of videos, that's 300,000 gigabytes of information that we've captured so far. For comparison, in 2021, we were just under 300,000 gigabytes of information. So we're already surpassed all of last year's total and we continue, we will expect to continue that trend. In cor- correlation with the Axon Body Cam, we've also implemented our Fleet 3 video camera. Uh, we've installed these cameras in all 216 marked police vehicles. They're front and rear cameras. Like our body cameras, there is a two-minute pre-event buffer, so to capture those two minutes prior to a stop occurring. It's capable of live streaming and GPS location. It also has signal activation, so when an officer activates their lights or draws their weapon, turns on their taser, it turns on the vehicle's camera. We have rear door activation, so if we're putting someone in the back door, it activates the camera for that as well. And it's also ALPR, Automatic License Plate Recognition, enabled. With Fleet 3, we were able to take advantage of the technology and implement automatic license plate reader technology. Prior to this, we would have to install a separate, vastly more expensive system on the rear of the police vehicles in order to capture the reads and hits. Now, with AI technology, Fleet 3 in-car camera is able to do that for us. We are able, able to capture reads and hits for stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, missing persons, or warrants. They're stored for 90 days in evidence.com and then purged from the system. If a hit results in an arrest or other, other evidentiary value, it's retained until no longer needed for court. It's important to note that no personal information is stored within the system. Since its inception, we've had over 1,224 confirmed hits on one of those categories. We've talked much about the need for expanded coverage and oversight of the oceanfront. With our Oceanfront Camera Project, originally in 2018, we had 30 cameras that were installed in and around the oceanfront. With this most recent expansion, we added 42 additional cameras, giving us 72 total cameras in the resort area. This is important because with the advent of our Real-Time Crime Information Center, they are also going to have additional eyes on the city, the citizens, and our officers, making everything safer at the oceanfront. On July 28th, 2022, we went live with radio encryption. At the time, we stated a number of reasons why we thought that this technology was needed and valuable. I'll give you one example of a local food line that was subject to a burglary. Our officers received a call to respond to a food line in which there were two persons who are on the roof of the, of the building. Fortunately, our officers were so close that they couldn't get away before they were apprehended. When our officers got to them, uh, they noticed that the suspects were listening to the police radio transmissions with a smartphone application on their phones. We were fortunate in that case because I think we caught them very quickly. But as we all know, it's hard to understand what a person's intent is. Had they had a, a different intent or a different mindset, the outcome could have been much, much worse. We're also required to protect certain information, personally identifying information. That means your date of birth, social security numbers that are transmitted every day over our, our police airwaves. We're required to protect juvenile information and protect the identity of sexual assault victims. In our Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police survey, 68 agencies responded and 30 actually responded that they employ encryption as well. It's important to note that these devices are encrypted, but the transmissions are still subject to applicable FOIA laws. And we are also still capable of communicating with our public safety partners. Deputy Chief Wychendall is going to talk on recruiting in a little bit, but some of the technology that goes with recruiting, uh, we implemented Salesforce on October 21st, 2021. This is, this has improved the communication with our potential applicants. Prior to, when an applicant would apply for our department, we were, would rely on a series of spreadsheets and Excel documents and it was often very difficult to stay in communication. We know engagement is a critical measure for continuing in the process. So with this system, we're able to automate follow-ups to the email with next steps, so they know exactly what's expected of them. There's near-instantaneous reporting for us so that we understand if there's a certain step in the, in the hiring process that's causing us a pain point and we need to devote more resources, we can address it at that moment. Uh, we're also able to capture leads, potential applicants, and automate emails to encourage those potential applicants to apply. On August 22nd, 2022, we were able to obtain a GovQA license for citizens to submit FOIA requests through a public portal. We receive almost 9,000 requests annually and this year we're on track to surpass that. We've had 6,985 requests year-to-date. And going back to the body camera footage, the amount of data that we have, the Fleet 3 in-car camera system, the more of those devices and the more data that we collect, the more FOIA requests that we receive. It also allows us to improve tracking assignments and tasks and in the future, it will allow, uh, for payment on the web portal. We're going to, uh, now do a little show and tell with you, uh, for a moment, Mr. Moss. I see you're excited.
2011, when I first got on here, that's e-ticketing first.
I don't want one of those. I'll do that somebody else.
I'm all on it.
So we are very, very close to unveiling e-ticketing. As Mr. Moss said, it's been a very long time in the making. It's planned for November go-live. We partnered with Tyler Brazos to implement the e-ticketing system. Um, it not only does e-tickets, but it, it does crash exchange and crash reporting. It does parking tickets and it is automatically selects our Community, Community Data Policing Collection Act, uh, information. We were able to use this on department-issued mobile devices and it's increased efficiencies, not only for our officers, but our courts, for, for the thousands of summonses that our department wrote every year. Another individual, sometimes two or three, had to take that same information and manually retype it into various systems, whether it be our records management system or the court's system. Well, now, with this implementation, once the officer submits the e-ticket, it's automatically entered in to not only our RMS, but the Virginia Supreme Court's database. So it's instantaneous. Uh, I know that our friends across the street at the courts are very excited about, uh, this implementation as well. I mentioned officer time and we've done a tremendous job and Deputy Chief Wychendall is going to talk about the, uh, gains in recruiting. Sometimes when I speak with our officers, it's, it's difficult for me to say I can give you a person right away. But with this, I hope to give you minutes. And minutes at each interaction is going to hopefully end up in hours saved every week that you're available to do other things, to do other proactive policing or engage the community in positive ways. In July 2022, we began a complete wholesale, uh, change of our outdated and equated mobile data computers. We expect that complete, to be completed by the end of the year and there was approximately 320 units that we were replacing. We chose the Panasonic CF33. You can see there, it's a two-in-one ruggedized device. These are meant to be part of our mobile policing initiative. So actually no longer tied to their car. Now, these devices are meant to be taken out. They can be taken out of the car as either a traditional laptop or you can detach it and use it as a tablet. They're no longer required to be, uh, stuck to the vehicle to do their work. Our mobile devices, which is another, uh, show and tell item that we have. Initially, with the implementation of e-ticketing, we were set to deploy roughly 300 ruggedized devices. Think, uh, one of your mail carrier, uh, large rugged devices that they use to deliver packages to you. Um, when we saw the estimated cost of that and the limited usability, I say limited usability because I said 300. So not everybody would be to enjoy the benefits that I'm talking to you. Uh, we made a strategic decision to pivot and look at what we would be capable of doing with a mobile device. We were able to do, uh, all of the things that I've previously discussed at roughly a fourth of the cost. And now every officer is issued a mobile device. Every officer is capable of e-ticketing and taking advantage of the efficiencies that we're seeing through our mobile policing initiative. We're able to do, uh, e-ticketing, accident exchange, uh, RMS and mobile field reporting on the devices, digital evidence collection, our ShotSpotter, uh, alerts come to these phones. We have access to Genetec, uh, we have citizen engagement tools and work-related apps that we just did not have access to on a work-related device. Some of the other, uh, benefits of partnering with Axon, we now have the TASER 7 Leslie for devices. Uh, nearly a third of our tasers were end-of-life prior to the RMS contract with Axon. With this, we have With this, we have a TASER 7, which is much more efficient. It also includes unlimited cartridges for replacement and automatic maintenance and replacement cycles every two and a half years. Axon Performance, I know we've discussed this previously, but Axon Performance is a performance and compliance monitoring tool for our body camera and Fleet 3 camera system. We can write policy, but how do we know that our officers are following policy? Well, Performance does just that. I'd like to highlight the over 90% activation rate that we have, and that's due in large part because our officers believe in the body camera and Fleet 3 technology, and it's also because our supervisors have the capability to monitor the compliance and understand if there's problems associated with activations. We're seeing success that when I go and speak with our vendor, quite frankly, most other agencies aren't even close. We also have a tool called Axon Respond that provides a situational awareness. So now, as a commander, I can pull up a screen, just like this, and see the GPS locations of officers and their vehicles. I can get alerts for excessive speed or if they're involved in a traffic accident or collision. Again, part of our enhanced effort to have greater situational awareness through the use of technology. With our RMS deployment, we're also overhauling our standards or our internal affairs software. They're going to provide us with a state-of-the-art early warning system and enhanced use of force reporting. It's also going to take place of our IA Pro software for streamlined electronic workflows. So our administrative investigative process is no longer going to be a paper folder passed down from one person to the next. It's all on the computer, and it's, it's streamlined and more efficient. They also integrate with our body camera and Fleet 3 videos. And finally, our records management system. It's go-live planned for the first quarter of 2023. It's going to replace our outdated, two-decade-old RMS system. It's going to allow us to finally get away from paper-based reports, much like e-ticketing, and it's going to allow us to take advantage of our mobile field reporting. So no more three-week-long backlogs, because, as you know, when you get a paper report, somebody has to re-enter that information, and when they stack up by the thousands, it can take time, and we have to take priority. The moment an officer generates a report, it's in the system and available for data consumption. And last but not least, on the technology, the Real-Time Crime Center. This is a very exciting opportunity for us. We have a dedicated space in New Police Headquarters. It's going to centralize a number of functions, primarily monitoring priority calls for service in real time. They're going to focus on priority one and two calls that emphasize violence and other officer safety. We're going to use available resources to support officers in the field. They're going to provide intelligence functions such as social network analysis, tactical and investigative support. So when officers are going to cases or detectives are going to cases actively, they can focus on the task at hand, knowing they have experts in the background, actively monitoring and being able to provide them with the most relevant and up-to-date information. They're going to monitor city cameras and ALPR alerts. Again, it's having another set of eyes and ears on our city's safety at all times. And they're going to provide NIBs and crime interruption support, which will assist with lead development and provide intelligence product inclusion.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. Thank you.
Questions on technology before I add.
John, what do you think about e-ticketing?
I love e-ticketing. I told you, I don't want to get the first one, but I want to be there when they install and go on the first control. I've been talking about it since 2011. Thank goodness for getting there. I couldn't be more pleased. But two things, I want to know, what's the connectivity between the technology systems we have and the drones that we have? Is there connectivity between the tactical control, or is it just a passive feed of information?
Our drones, we're able to see a passive feed of the video anywhere on our mobile device or at a desktop computer.
The second question is, the bricks are the most advanced when it comes to cameras and PC. Have we been looking at AI technology to be able to have software actually analyze the videos, so we don't have to actually look at it humans, much like we do on other kind of systems? And then it says, oh, now a person needs to look at this. So is there an AI background to our, to our video feeds?
There is, actually, Mr. Moss. So we have a separate software system that is compatible with Genetek that will allow us to feed it information and filter out certain data. If we were looking for, let's say, a red vehicle at a certain date and time and a location, the system with AI assistance could actually filter those vehicles and point us to a particular time on a vehicle or a particular camera to help us look further at that information.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Great work. Don't stop.
Michael Van Delshen.
Thank you, Chief Nutigay and Captain Zelmus. I really am excited about the positive impacts the implementation of this new technology will have for safety in our community. But I guess my question is, just how do we compare in terms of what other communities of our size or around the country is doing? Were, were we way behind before, and we're just catching up now? Or are we much more advanced based on the things that you described? Kind of where are we in the arc of how we're using technology compared to other communities?
We are catching up. I'm very hopeful and confident by the time we bring all these to fruition that we will be leading, and that's the goal that I have tasked the department with, is I want to be a leader in the use of technology as a force multiplier, not just for the seven cities, not just for the Commonwealth, but as a national model. So this is positioning, it's well on the way, and our challenge is, we're going to get these to fruition, and then we're going to continue to look at new technologies to make us the leader in this area.
Thank you, and just a quick follow-up, and I think you just basically spoke to that. Are there other things out there that we don't have yet that other communities are using that, I mean, I'm sure there are, right? But I mean, and so, so this catches up to the, this catches up to the middle point? And then, do we need to be making more investments in, in the future? Or is the technology still unfolding and developing, and it's not ready for implementation yet? Or both?
I'm getting approached with new technology ideas every day in my email, so I know that there is a number of things that we haven't even broached, like with a number of areas in the police department, we just have not had the capacity to take on any new technology projects. So the goal is to get these to fruition and then start looking at what else is out there that we think would benefit the PD and the citizens of Virginia Beach, and if there's going to be funding involved to come back to this body and make our case.
Thank you. Delshen.
Yes, thank you, chief. Couple of questions. One is, I was interested in the numbers that you had from the gun spotting or shot spotting. Do you have, maybe that'd be fair, but do you have some demographics in terms of who is doing all of this, this shooting in terms of demographics?
For the arrests, we can supply the arrest data.
Yeah.
Like Captain Zelmus said, you know, the arrests are just one part
Right.
of the use of the technology. Like we indicated, we're only getting a 911 call 22% of the time. So 78% of the time, we're not getting a 911 call for gunfire activity in these communities.
Okay.
It's very hard for us to be evidence-based and data-driven if we're missing that 80% of our data set. So this helps us identify those repeat locations where maybe we need to look at additional cameras. But I think the other thing that we need to consider is what it does is it really builds capacity and support for the policing in those communities, because we know sometimes communities can become apathetic, and they think that the police don't care, and they don't respond to gun violence and violent crime in their community. And we can see why that, they think that if we're only responding, you know, 22% of the time.
Right.
Now we're responding 100% of the time. So that builds capacity and trust in the police in those communities.
Okay. And regarding the video, and I know this is kind of a controversial issue about facial recognition, do you use that technology?
We currently don't.
Okay.
We were prohibited by the General Assembly up until recently.
Right.
I think this past July, they, they switched that to allow certain departments to use it. I believe it has to go through VSP and that there is a process, but currently, we don't use it, we don't possess our own, because it is controversial. And so that's something that if we decided that we wanted to use that, that we would probably want to come back to this body and have some conversation.
And want the public to know what the situation was with that. And then, you mentioned about community engagement. You said one of the, I think at the mobile device, I was wondering what the game plan is, what sort of community engagement tools are on that, and how is it used?
For one, I think it's, it might be taken, taken for granted sometimes, the ability to text back and forth and have a known contact. When our officers had their personal cell phones, sometimes it was available to communicate. I know our community liaison officers and our resort liaison officers now have assigned devices, and they're able to communicate frequently with their contacts. Secondly, using the, the mobile devices we have through Axon's Capture app, the ability to send individualized or community-based links to request for evidence now. So if we're at a, at a crime scene, we don't have to look for the person who knows how to download a video or ask the person to give us their, their mobile device so that we could then retrieve evidence off of it. Now we're able to either text or email a link, and they can send whatever evidence that they have directly to that link to our systems. So it's just the, it's the more efficient and quicker interaction face-to-face and with that immediate feedback.
And just in response to articles just read here in the Princess Anne Independent News front page, and I know you just hired someone to address your communications and media relations, and I don't know, chief, if you want to bring up your new person or not, just want to hear what the game plan is to better engage our media and the public.
Absolutely, and this is something we've actually been working on for quite some time. We realize that we have a capacity issue. We've had two people in our PAO now for close to a year, and they do an incredible job of, one, to be there to interact with our media and handle that, the just overstaggering amount of requests, and one, to manage our social media. So we've taken a number of steps. I think we can all agree, over the last 18 months or so, we've expanded the use of our social media to put out information to the community and the media greatly, and that's something that we'll use these new devices to build on that capacity of social media. We've been trying to fill Ms. Saunders' position eight months, nine months, because we know that we had a capacity issue. We're the police, many of us are not communications experts. We needed a communications expert, we realize that, to come in and assess how we are doing things and, and give us some feedback on how we improve, and that's exactly why Ms. Saunders is here. I know that that's what she's going to bring to the table. But while that was occurring, and knowing that we have a capacity issue and that we can't expect one person to monitor all those requests and calls seven days a week, 24 hours a day, something that we had not had in the beach was to delegate that authority to our on-scene incident commanders. They were not used to, it really was a paradigm shift. So we have brought in outside media training. Actually, Mr. Rob Tifano is here this morning, providing additional training to some of the lieutenants and captains that we missed on the last go-round, putting them in mock interviews in front of the camera. Many of them are very timid, it can be intimidating, but they're getting used to it. And we expect our commanders on scene to provide that basic factual information so that our media partners have what they need. So we do have a capacity issue, we're trying to overcome that so we can, we can be better partners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Aaron, and then John, did you have your?
Thank you, staff, for also being here. I want to publicly acknowledge your support in C-Tech community, where we opened up a new park and playground there. A lot of your officers were there as well, and even prior to that, you and your staff always having a presence there. I take my hat off to Captain McBride of the 2nd Precinct as well, also the community they have in Landis, that have been a lot to the residents there. My question is, it's centered around the 3rd precinct. I know we, we, myself, and I believe our councilman, Wu, have attended the community, the community partnership with the DOJ, and so I'm wondering how is that partnership going? I know I'm looking forward to continuing to support that effort in community policing and building those relationships with our, with our police department and community. So I wonder if you have an update on that?
I know it's still very active that we are working through establishing that council to provide guidance to the 3rd precinct on how we improve those relations, and we're hoping that what we're doing with the DOJ and the 3rd precinct will become the model that we will replicate in the other three precincts.
All right, well, let me know I'm here to help. For that as well. My, my last question is, with so much new technology coming to our department, what are the challenges are you seeing in having it with being more transparent? I know some of the data there, they're privileged, some things, videos, you can't necessarily share with the public, but just what is that like? And what is, what does your new community communications director, how does she see, what does she do overcoming that, that kind of, you know, obstacle now with so much data, so many FOIA requests, and what can be shared and what can't? How is she going to handle transparency?
And I think that is, that is a big question that we are all trying to answer. One is, we need to build capacity to be more timely, and that is probably our biggest obstacle. We are complying with all those requests. Anybody that asks for factual information, we provide. Of course, it goes through the necessary redaction. We're probably not as timely as we'd like, and we acknowledge that, and that's something that we've been trying to build, you know, the infrastructure around. Most large departments our size have a much bigger PAO function, and we realize that coming in the door, that what we have is, is not sufficient. But we really needed the right person, because we do need a true communications expert. Last thing that I wanted to do, because, you know, media relations is a nuanced activity, and I think the last thing that we would want to see is to take an officer that is not trained in dealing with all these functions and put them in a job that they're not equipped. So one of the things that we've had to do, and the folks doing the job now are doing a fantastic job, but we've had to get them the training, because you're just not going to step into the PAO office, you know? You're a police officer on Sunday, and you walk into that room on a Monday and, and have all the answers, and it takes years and years to develop those relationships and that understanding of how we, we, and it's not just the media, it's, it's our community. So we have struggled, a lot of it's been a capacity, it's been turnover, but we're, we're trying to solve it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service, thank you all for your services as well, and again, I'm looking forward to see how we can replicate that, that community engagement aspect or partnership we have with DOJ in the 3rd precinct. Hopefully, we can get that off the ground and get it running, and so, looking forward to helping anyway, I guess.
Thank you.
Leonard.
Thank you, chief. Get back to the technology, and in my district, as I've gone around talking to people, it seems that our public safety is very good. There's just a sense, it's an admirable thing, but it just seems like we're on the right track there. And I was wondering with the technology, is part of it not only that we're able to, you know, catch people with shot spotters and all that, but the deterrence factor, the word gets out there, hey, you're on Cameron, Virginia Beach, they have shot spotters, do you sense any sort of deterrence with the technology?
I think we do, and, you know, that's one of the reasons that I felt that this would be in addition to Virginia Beach, in my previous experience, those are deterrents. And bringing that technology here is showing that it is working, and we're going to continue to expand on it. But one of the things that we've done is really restrategize how we go about addressing crime. We want it to be very data-driven and focused on the right individuals. We do not preach a lot of arrests, we preach making the right arrest. We want quality over quantity, and we want to make sure that we are impacting those individuals that are, you know, creating and causing the crime in Virginia Beach. So we've really kind of restructured how we do things and focusing on the right individuals through intelligence and.
Well, my folks think it's working from, from my district, they really do.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, John?
I'm going to bring up a technology, which I know I've discussed with the chief before, which we aren't using, to Michael's point, probably for a later date, but a big issue we hear across our communities is speeding. And many communities have speed cameras, which we are allowed to do, but that's a double-edged sword, because usually the people complaining are the ones that get the tickets. But I'm just mentioning that because I do believe we will be hearing more about that in the coming thing, but I just want to, not asking for comment, keep you safe, chief.
Thank you, sir.
But that is a, a technology that you're going to be hearing from our constituents is, that is one of the things besides just the perception of safety as you're knocking on doors, is neighborhood speeding, but of course, it's the neighbors in the neighborhood doing it. But I do believe we're going to hear a little bit from our constituents about speed cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Brothers mayor.
The social media's been fantastic, and I enjoy seeing.
The social media has been fantastic. And I enjoy seeing, we picked up 15 guns this week, illegal guns this weekend. And so you seem to be having a lot of success picking up the illegal guns. Can you speak to, or if you can, maybe you don't want to divulge how you're, how you're doing that?
No, exactly. It goes back to how we have restructured. When I arrived, we had what we called COP squads in each of the precincts. And, and we really asked them to do a myriad of things, but not focus on one specific task. So we have transitioned them into what we call crime suppression squads. Instead of all being in uniform, half of those are in plainclothes. And we really put our efforts on surveillance of problem locations, problem individuals. We have brought both DEA, I think FBI down to give these folks additional training in managing sources of information and confidential informants so that we can focus on the right people. So each precinct has a very effective crime suppression squad. And their, their sole task is to focus on violent crime interruption, felony activity, and illegal weapon possession.
Anyone else? Chief, you know, speaking as somebody on days would love my beeper back, you know. Let me just say that I think that the work you're doing is tremendous. From what I understand, you know, we had a, you know, a very good summer, all things considered. Feedback from, you know, a lot of the folks at the oceanfront. It's also the people that go to the oceanfront, not just the oceanfront businesses and things of that nature. So I think that's great there too. But, you know, I think, you know, once again, as we are, you know, part of the 757 mayors getting together with the other leaders from the region, you know, it's pretty obvious that the quicker you get information, you know, once again, we talked about how crime doesn't honor any border. And I, I'm going to make an assumption with this type of technology. And then once again, you know, if other departments use best practices and you're in sync, you know, that could only help this situation, you know, in terms of, you know, working collaboratively. You have to get together. Is that a pretty accurate statement?
Yes, sir. And, you know, I, I've got to thank our partners over at Norfolk. As we talk about crime, right after Deputy Chief Witschendall gives the recruiting update, some of the things that we have had ongoing series of robberies and different things, it's been a joint effort with NPD to help us put these incidents down. So there is definitely a ongoing renewed collaborative effort.
And the other thing is too, the Hampton Roads Planning Commission is organizing, has helped us organize with the other mayors. And one of the things they're trying to do, they're trying to have the regional economists put together a dashboard. But they hit it with which because everybody's got some different record, way that they record down and everything. But I'm sure that once the dashboard comes on, start sharing the information and everything, you know, we're going to have a good collaborative effort regionally about, you know, taking some of this stuff on. Combined with Vice Mayor Wood's initiative of what we're all doing in the city and what we plan, plan to. You know, I think, you know, we're, with everything, we're marching in the right direction.
Let's finish their presentation. Finish your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. So I do have to, my phone blew up because I didn't miss Deputy Chief Hatfield. So, so I didn't acknowledge him when we started. So Deputy Chief Hatfield was recently promoted, took over for Deputy Chief Billy Dean. After 35 dedicated years of service, he retired. And Deputy Chief Hatfield oversees our training bureau, our internal bunch of critical functions. And now I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Witschendall.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I appreciate you having me. So let me just address quickly the pink that I have on, since nobody else has pink on. This is for breast cancer awareness month. It's for the, it's the patches and the badge. I have the gold and pink badge.
I have pink shoes.
I have the pink and gold badges. There's also a solid green badge that you can, for just one part of my member. So again, it's for breast cancer awareness. Right, so I'm going to cover a number of items here.
We're going to be talking about a number of items in our recruiting and retention. For those of you who heard me speak at last month's OPA or some of the other subcommittee groups, this will be an update for you. You got most of it, but we did have some things that have changed along the way. So when we, we get an applicant that comes to us to apply, there are a number of different ways that they can apply. Obviously, they can pick up the phone and call us. We're going to direct them to our website. They can stop into the law enforcement training academy in any precinct and get the information that they need to apply for the process. So the first step would be for them to apply at our city's career page. The second would be to submit a waiver. That waiver allows us to run a background on that person, contact their references that they've submitted, and so on. The next step would be the written exam. The written exam is held here at our law enforcement training academy. We are in the works of trying to offer an online opportunity. We're trying to work that out with the city treasurer's office. As far as the price goes for that, it's a little bit complicated at the moment. But that is our next step for that written exam. And I, I feel that once we do that, we're going to get a whole lot more applicants, especially some that are out of state. The personal history questionnaire, which we call the PHQ, is just before the polygraph exam. That's a number of questions that the person fills out prior to the polygraph. You get the polygraph exam and then the background investigation is all returned. And it goes before pre-screening board, then goes to the chief and the chief signs off on a person getting hired. They then go to the oral board. Down here at the bottom, it says the physical ability test, psychological, medical screenings. Those will individually help for people that come here. We do offer those in the weekend for our out-of-state because we realize traveling is expensive to get on a plane. Sometimes you might not be able to get here. So for the weekend, we offer those all at once to put them through the process. So we have taken 715 applications. We're on point to hit our peak of 960. And as you'll see, 48% of those are turning in waivers to be screened for testing. Those that don't turn the waivers, we are reaching out to them via computer, email, phone, to follow up on and see why they didn't turn their application. Also, keep in mind Salesforce, which Captain Zolms addressed earlier, also helps us track that information for our applicants. 75% of those who turned in their waivers and attended the test passed, which is 25% above the national average. And 85% pass rate is equal to our national average as well. So keep in mind, we're all vying for the same pool of candidates in our area. Really happy with this number. So for our veterans, obviously, we live in a very transit community with a large military. This year, we partnered with Skillbridge, which allows somebody coming out of the military to still stay in the military, go into our academy and finish out processing in the military, in processing into our academy. We do that through the Virginia Department of Veteran Services. This helps when they do this, this process going into the transition. They can transition their post-service life. Because that, if you leave somewhere, obviously, when I leave, it's going to be a big change. So for our military members, we're trying to get them through as simple as possible. Nobody wants to lose anybody coming through the academy if they've got too much on their. All right. So what are our current efforts? We go to career fairs, hiring expos, community events and festivals. We do social, social media posts, digital campaigns. Our biggest to date that's worked really well for us are referral bonuses for our officers. Currently, when you go in the academy after October 1st, we just had one start. You get a $5,000 signing bonus. That $5,000 is broken into two groups. You get one when you're done with the academy and you get the other when you are finished with your PTO, your training program. We also offer a referral bonus for our officers that referred somebody into the academy. And if that person graduates through the PTO program, they get $1,000.
That's a total of $5,000 or a total of 10?
It's five, no, it's just $5,000 for.
Oh, so 25 and a half, basically.
Right in half, yes, sir. These are some of the ways that we are marketing. You see, we have Facebook desktop, mobile, Instagram, Facebook, and different types of Facebook stores. And occasionally we tweet out different things for fairs that we may be at. Our out-of-state marketing, I think I kind of covered a little bit of that, what we want to do with our written test. So our written test is, is really big. Obviously, that has to be passed. And we want to make it easier for people to take that written test. So in our digital ad campaign, you'll see later, once we get that onboard, that that will be advertised as well. Currently, look at what we have here. Directed targeted email distribute, 25,000 emails were sent. We go to New York tri-state area. We just did one in Gordon, yeah, I'm sorry. So Lieutenant Gordon just came back from New York City tri-state area. We've got New Jersey, Connecticut, and New York. We went up there because we didn't have the end, the testing done on the computer yet. We had hoped to, but instead we took a jaunt up to New York City. We ended up getting 22 applicants, I believe. Two were white males, the rest were minorities. We've got 327 potential leads for perceptive officers that have been captured. And as you see from the last 30 days, 52% of all new applicants have come from that tri-state area, which is pretty good. All right, the 30-30 program, 30 by 30 program, I'm really proud of this one. Something we kicked off last year with all of our women. Our goal is twofold. We would like to have 30% of our women that are going into the academy. I'm sorry, girls going into the academy, we'd like to have 30, 30% of those be in the academy. Not if I said that right. And also, we would like 30% on our department. So right now, we have 17% women and 3% in leadership, which was, we are above the national with women. We're about the same with in leadership ranks. So the other thing that we're doing for the 30-30 initiative that we just started, and it'll roll out here shortly, will be, we are targeting colleges and sports groups for women. That's an easy transition. You know, obviously, being in a officer's life is very physically challenging. So we wanted to target our athletes to see if we could boost our numbers that way to get some minorities in the door. Our hiring certified officers, really happy with the certified officers. We haven't lost one yet. Been really proud on our marketing campaign for this. October 1, we started, we will offer $10,000 to our laterals. It'll be broken in the same fashion on different points that they get out of the academy and that they graduate out of the PTO program. We currently have two members of our laterals of the 16 that we sent, have sent through through this year. We have two that are going through what's called an option five academy. Previously, DCGS has gone back and forth over the years on whether we can take out-of-state applicants or all in-state. So option five will be for out-of-state applicants. So they have to meet our criteria. DCGS has to vet them, make sure that they have more than two years on the previous agency they came from. And that, the stuff that they have from their academy, most of them are post, so DCGS kind of align with each other. So we'll send them to the, the option five academy. This just started, so we're sending our first two. They're in Fairfax, Virginia. And then we will be the southern tip for the next future option five academy. So we're really excited about that because it gives us an opportunity to get a lot more people through the option five. It's really expensive to send them, obviously, if you get a hotel, food, all that to send them to Fairfax. We will do that here and we'll have that in-house. Those that are going through right now, one starts in November, plus these option five will be sometime around December graduating. The certified officers are great because they're all done through word of mouth. We have taken a number of our employees from Norfolk. There was a core group of five that came from Norfolk and they speak very highly of our agency. Yes, the bonus is great and the bonus is a boon, obviously cash-wise, but what is drawing people here in our lateral program is they're allowed to keep their seniority from the other agency. If you have 15 years there, you get 15 years here. Shift bids are very important to officers. That happens twice a year. And they bid to see what shift they're going to be on. They're not rotating shifts. You can pick day shift, evening shift, or midnight shift. So that seems to be the biggest draw that these certified like out of it. Some of our incentives, I'm not going to cover all of these. I just covered some of them for you. We have a number of different career paths. I'm told from all our laterals that we have probably more units and more things to do. Once you get here, the, the options are endless for you. So there's 40-plus career paths. That's actually pretty good. Promotional opportunities are very good as well. I want to mention, you already see our city benefits. Everybody has the same city benefits. I want to mention our college credits down at the bottom. So we got with a few colleges. We asked them to take a look at our curriculum, our academy, academy curriculum. They look at that, they evaluate it, and they say, we'll give you X amount of credits for college. Virginia Wesleyan is paired with us. They're giving 32 college credits. That's for classes that you have taken while you're in the academy. They'll give up to 42 for other classes. So if you were a drug recognition officer, you might get a sociology class. So they evaluate your training record and then they'll tell you what you have. Our bottom line for supervisors to apply to be a sergeant is 60 credits. So you can get 32, 42 just by going to Virginia Wesleyan. In Virginia Wesleyan, probably in the next coming year, we will have a Virginia Policing Institute partnership with Virginia Wesleyan. So just a number of things that we are creating. TCC also works with us. TCC will give us about 23 credits going through their process. Avon University of Liberty, it's not an ad for them, but just the one, some of the ones that we do. And you look up there, stipends for degrees. I want to mention that too. So you get pay. Obviously, we just did the pay pan. You get longevity. And you also get different stipends for, depending upon whether you have a bachelor's degree, master's degree, or associate's degree, which is very important to officers. All right. So this last class that we just started, we started with 47. We are down to 45. That's actually pretty good, starting in August. That we're, we're about a month and a little couple of days afterwards, and we've only lost two. And those were, of those two that were lost, they're personal choices. Personal issues where they wanted to go back, either where they came from or this just was not the job for them. We do get a few that come in there. They spend a week or two and it's just not for them and they move on. So we do a police academy twice a year. We're looking at doing three smaller ones in the future if we can. That's yet to be determined. We need to get through the changes that we have with a couple of different things. And we'll evaluate that and see if that's a possibility. Smaller academies work a lot better as well. Especially for the recruits, you can give them a lot more one-on-one attention. Uniforms and equipment's provided each recruit free of charge. And the recruits have over 1,000 hours of training. DCGS does not require 1,000 hours of training. That's what we give. We go above and beyond our partners in the other cities on what we give our recruits. So we give the core group of DCGS objectives that DCGS is asking for, which is around 450 or so. And then we top that with all our other classes. So it turns out to be 1,000 hours. I think it's 960 actually, around there. All right. So I kind of already covered this one. I got ahead of myself, but I'm really proud of the certified hires that you see. So. We had 16 and 22, and two of those, as I told you before, in our option five academy. Hopefully, in January, when we do our option five academy, I hope to have more than four or five in there that we've been able to garner.
Can you just explain certified officers when you say, you say?
Oh, certainly. Certified and lateral kind of interchangeable. If you are with another agency, we can bring you over here. If you are in-state and you have a DCGS certification, then we will put you into an academy here, which is modified academy. It's not the full academy, less than two months.
Academy graduates, these are already certified.
Certified officers in another agency that are switching over here to come here. Of the 16 that we just took, they have over 100 years' experience. Probably our highest is maybe 16 years. And then we have 11 additional certified that are currently in the process. And I kind of outlined that in the next January academy, we'll have a few. Does not include the two. So you can see here on our campaign, do more, have more, be more. We have Skillbridge. We have five active duty members in that process right now. Our cadets, make you familiar with our cadet program. It's something that we have started, I think, since I was at PDNT, which I left there in 2001. We've wanted that for a long amount of time. So we finally got the funding for that. We can take up to 20 cadets. Those cadets are learning on the job, police work, ride-alongs, community service opportunities. They're working in our precincts. They're coming to do PT on the weekends. A lot of things that are keeping them integrated. And that's between the ages of 18, 21. We don't want to lose anybody. I mean, it's really to the point where we need to keep them engaged here so we don't lose them somewhere else. Gives them a taste of police work. The other opportunity that we have for this, even though we have six active, three are currently in the academy, is that we've had a couple that have come here from different places. They're not certified. They're leaving one job and the next job for the academy is in January, let's say. So if we get somebody at the beginning of December who now does not have a job, but they want to go in the January academy and they're slated to go in it, we will hire them as a cadet to keep them here. It's a part-time job. That's another opportunity that we have to keep everybody engaged in on our department. So the digital campaign, I've already talked to you about that. We're focused on our lateral officers. We went up to New York City in the tri-state area. Lieutenant Gordon went up there, as I explained, the numbers that we got from there. New York City has always been fantastic for us. Anytime we've gone to John Jay College, Monroe College, any of those. Anytime we've gone to John Jay College, Monroe College, any of those, the officers like to come down here.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? Aaron?
There are just a few questions. The written exam, the physical test, when was the last time they were, they were updated?
It's been a while, it's been about 15 years. So we're in the process of doing a transportability study, which will evaluate that physical test and the validity of the written test.
Okay, so they are there every 15 years?
There's no schedule for it. We want to change the physical, physical test at this time, so we have to do a transportability study.
And the written exam?
Same.
And then, I just, you know, I'm just curious, the polygraph test isn't always admissible in a court of law. Why do you all do polygraph tests for part of your hiring process?
So a polygraph is a tool for us to use. As I told you, they fill out what's called a PHQ, it's questionnaire. And we go based off of this and we, we want to weed out those who aren't being, or being less truthful and honest with us. If they fill out that they've had no drugs, right, in the last five years, that PHQ where they say they haven't had any, we're able to see if there's deception. It gives us an opportunity to question them further, to elicit that information. So it's just a tool for us to use. And prior to coming on the police department, we, we do that for our civilians as well. Anybody that's going to be in the police department working around money, drugs, things of that nature. So it's just a tool for us to, to utilize.
And my last question is, there's your 30 for 30 program, which I think is awesome, amazing. You have 17% of women right now representation in ranks. What is the, what is the percentage of minorities in ranks, representation in ranks?
So I think are not in ranks, our African-American population is about 7%, and I think there are two African-American supervisors.
Well, in ranks?
What, percentage-wise?
Yeah.
Are we doing throughout our entire, you want our entire numbers for like what's already in leadership or overall?
Yeah.
Because it's going to be different.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm curious in. I wonder if we could develop or come up with a plan to have more. I just wanted, I think that's a great, great model, but more minority representation in the ranks and leadership.
Counselor, the best way to answer that is not enough. So the, the numbers are woefully lacking. We realize that they're lacking. The challenge for policing in general is just trying to bring quality, qualified individuals to fill the gaps we have. So it's, it's been a struggle to concentrate on minority recruiting exclusively when we, we find ourselves in the place that we've been the last two years.
Sure, but the ones we have there already, what is their years, I guess, and we, I guess you can give this information to me, what are their years of service and what is their promotional record looks like? I think, you know, just as important is to have more women in, in ranks and, and that representation, I think it's also important that we have more minorities in ranks and representation as well. Since a lot of the communities that we are trying to improve community policing in, it would be helpful if the community can identify and relate with someone who looks like them that's also in rank.
Yes, sir. And I've met with our African-American officers, I meet with them almost quarterly, and that's one of the conversations that we have. They are heavily encouraged to please try to take these promotional tests so that we can get more of our minority officers in our promotional ranks so that we do reflect the community in a number of different capacities.
Thank you. Okay, Rosemary.
This is exciting to see all the true doing with promotions and I think, I mean, recruiting, excuse me. And, and I think in the past, we've always tended to bring a lot of officers from the New Jersey and, and that area. And this 30 by 30, Shannon, you're, will be a great role model for that 30 by 30 program. And, and I do agree with Mr. Rouse, we do need more minorities to reflect our own demographics. But we, as long as I've been on council, we've always had a big shortfall of, of officers. And I know even that shortfall, the number of officers that you aspire to have achieved is even greater than that. So where do we stand on our numbers right now?
We have currently 75 vacancies. That does not include the 45 in the academy, because I'm very hesitant to include those in our numbers, because unfortunately, we've had about a 50% attrition rate in some of our academies. So we don't really want to include them until we know that they're going to graduate. If all 45 of those graduate, the vacancy number goes down to 30. That, that's what we're hoping for. But I also caution that that gets us back up to the 787, because we have converted some vacant sworn positions for some much-needed non-s sworn positions over the year.
Better than, yeah, but on council is fantastic. Keep up the good work.
Great. Okay. Anything else?
I talk about the crime.
You, you counselled 5 or 6, so we can continue with this, but I'd like counsel to be aware of the time that they're at, so they've got to go through their agenda review.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead. You know, at this point, I think you had an outstanding presentation, and thank you very much. Thank you very much. All righty. At this point, any council liaison reports? Okay, how about council comments?
I just had a question of where we are on doing the, getting the public engagement piece ready for Rudy Loup.
So I think staff is in the process of selecting a facilitator, and then once they select a facilitator, they're going to start meeting with the community on what next steps look like for that.
So do we have a timeline on that? Okay, I think that's really important to all of us. I'd like to get moving on that. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron and Guy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quick, as you all know, I'm, I'm myself and council member Miles is our liaison for the Minority Business Council. At the prior meeting, we discussed, there was a presentation done by school board on all their contracting and minority participation in the dollars that we allocate to the school board. Well, they don't track their participation in minority businesses. So with that being said, we had a brief discussion, I myself and I'm sure Councilman Miles were co-sponsor a resolution coming forward to include the school board in the disparity study, which we've already allocated for within the budget. And so that will be coming forward once the legal team gets it back to us. And that way, we can track the dollars as well when we, we allocate it over. As you all know, we can only ask the school board, we can't force them to do anything, but I, I would be hopeful that they will take part in this disparity study going forward.
Okay, thank you, Guy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the nature of, from my standpoint, a council liaison to the Resort Advisory Commission and also the council comment in general, I wanted to report that Councilman Berluci and I have discussions about the, further discussions about the task force for implementation of cannabis legislation in the state so that we could have a more activist, if you will, approach to this, trying to stay, at least keep up and stay ahead where, where it's necessary and reasonable. In that regard, I've had discussions with the city attorney's office about drafting ordinance to create a workforce, excuse me, a task force for, for this purpose. And I'll, maybe Councilman Berluci could add.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. I know we're short on time. I would just, I would add that I'm very pleased to work with Councilmember Tower on this initiative. He raised this issue at a previous workshop and, and elevated the concerns that were being expressed by some in the resort community. And I think we all agree, this is a citywide issue. There's a lot of great opportunity available to our community as a result of the changing laws and perceptions around cannabis. And there also could be some challenging aspects for every aspect of our community. And I think what we're asking to do here is establish a task force that will consider all of that, develop a plan that works best for our community. So it really is, has been nice to work with Mr. Tower and also with Mr. Stiles and his team. And I look forward to bringing something back that we can talk about as a group. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yep, one with.
Just on that issue, can staff give us a report in our next packet of what the laws are in the Commonwealth? They're very confusing to me. Kind of like you can do this, but you can't do that. And I'm not sure what the legislation is requiring.
Staff is in the process of preparing two reports based on the last time we talked to council. One is on the current law enforcement activities and rules and regulations around enforcing the decriminalization, that may be the wrong way of, of saying it. And also, staff is also preparing the, the other opportunity about possibly dispensaries and what the impact that could have on the community should that come into effect. From our understanding, this, on the dispensary side, the state has not taken any action officially yet, but there's been conversation that's been going on about ideas on what that could possibly look like. I think staff is also in the process of coordinating with the, the state cannabis czar, for the lack of a better word, to come and present something to the council to get, give us a better understanding of what's in the hopper on the state side. And I think that person is also tentatively acknowledged that they're willing to meet with the public as well and answer some of the public questions, which could then be a good segue into council's future task force, should council move in that direction.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you know, just very quickly, last Saturday, Patrick Haney and I were speakers at the Virginia VML Mayor's Association. Topics of conversation, very interesting, crime, inter-communit, council relationships, civility and continuing relations, and noise and short-term rentals. And these were even cities of 1,000 or more. So once again, there's a lot of commonality out there about what even the big cities are going for. Yeah, John?
Two items. We did finally close out the comment period on noise. So the staff will be looking at all those comments. We're looking to hold the, I guess you'd call it a early afternoon and an evening session on Thursday, November the 10th, that's tentative, to collect feedback from everyone else. We'll be able to put it out with plenty of time for people to digest that and work with staff. Secondly, this term of the Supreme Court, I think there already were hurting the affirmative action case, which will really influence minority contract and what we legally do based on that opinion. And then, of course, there's the Alabama case. I would just ask the legal staff, as those oral arguments are completed and the transcripts are available, I'd like those to be shared with the council, because those have meaningful impact on two things that we fundamentally do and could possibly change how we do business. And that's the two items.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, if we could get into a agenda review.
Okay, so 4 and 12 have to be pulled as they are speakers. And it's my understanding that Mr. Moss and the manager agrees that number 12 would be deferred indefinitely.
Okay, that's it.
Is there anything else for anybody?
Could you say that again, because you kept 4 and 12?
12. 4 and 12.
Yes, sir.
I have a substitute. Deferred indefinitely.
But we have to hear it because they're speakers.
Yes, I have a substitute motion for six to use the TIP fund in lieu of, of ARP money to fund the repair. I'll talk about that at the time.
Okay, great.
I'll pass it out. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point.
Does that mean you need to pull it?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. You told me I wouldn't forget, and I did. Everybody at their place has a resolution to, for declaring a state of emergency. We need to do this as an add-on, so we'll need to do this first and then we'll add it on to consent unless anybody has a problem.
Okay. Okay, you know, thank you. The chair will want to take a motion recess into a closed section pursuant to the exemption of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A, Code of Virginia, for the following purposes: public contract discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions in terms of the scope of such contracts. And where the discussions in an open section would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A, 29 Atlantic Park Project, publicly held properties, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose or disposition of the public held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A, 3, District 6, formerly Beach. Legal matters consultation with legal council employee or retained by the public body specific to legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice of such council pursuant to Sections 2.2, 3711A, 8, and that's Washington Square, West Virginia, Beach. Executive session confidentiality requirements and personnel matters, discussions, considerations with the executive candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance of the motion, salaries disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or appointees from any public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A, 1, and that's capital appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies or appointees. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Okay.
Councilman Berluci?
Aye.
Councilman Brandon?
Aye.
Councilman Wallace?
Aye.
Councilman Ross?
Aye.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Lewis?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, folks, at this table, research and executive, if you could just take a very short.
Maybe a dinner. Dinner out there.
Yes, definitely, I'm saying a short break, we have dinner.